Good afternoon, gentlemen. Welcome to our 6:30 public hearing meeting where we have, I think, three items on the agenda. Ms. Salisbury?
Notice is hereby given, excuse me, that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing before final approval by the council of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to further amend the agreement for establishment of multi-county industrial business park for properties located in a redevelopment project area by and between Charleston County, South Carolina, and Colleton County, South Carolina.
Did it have any speakers signed up? All right, anything from council? Okay, next one, please.
Notice is hereby given that the county council of Charleston County should hold a public hearing before final approval by the council of an ordinance to further amend the agreement for a development of a joint county industrial park by and between Charleston County, South Carolina, and Colleton County, South Carolina.
Anybody signed up?
No, sir.
Anything from council? All right, next one?
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the county council of Charleston County, South Carolina, to consider an ordinance authorizing the execution of and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between CK Crosspoint Two LLC, Argent's Air Express Limited, and Charleston County whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with the companies.
Anybody signed up? Anything from council? Okay, that concludes our public hearing. We are now going to our public comments. Do we have anyone signed up?
We do. We have two people signed up. The first person is Glenda Miller.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Miller, would you give us your name and address? You have up to two minutes.
Okay, my name is Glenda Miller. My address is 3377 Cottage Plantation Road, John's Island. Good evening, members of council. Mr. Chairman, I'm here to speak on behalf of alternate six and to give you the top ten reasons to NICS 526. Number 10, John's Island folks don't want or need a billion-dollar parking lot to feel as special as the people on in Mount Pleasant. We have the Westmoreland Bridge and Glen McConnell exit, so that provides us with optimum parking already. Number nine, 526 is not crucial to port-related commerce. Number eight, people will lose their property or see their values decrease significantly. The feds have indicated this is not a project it will fund, so some members of county council have decided to fund the project with a half-cent sales tax bait-and-switch scheme. Note number six, NOAA has stated it will not facilitate or be used as an evacuation route. Number five, it will take at least thirty acres away from the James Island County Park. Number four, it will claim at least thirty acres of wetlands which will exasperate flooding. Number three, wildlife and marine habitats will be destroyed. Number two, it will terminate at Calhoun Street in front of the new children's hospital, further complicating a busy, congested area. And number one, we cannot afford it. It's going to cost a billion dollars for eight miles of roadway. Rational Roads of John's Island has proposed alternative [beep].
Go ahead, I'll let you finish. Give you about thirty more seconds, go ahead.
This is a thirty-one-page document that divides John's Island into nine sections, identifies the problems and the solutions for those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, Ms.?
Is Jacqueline Gore.
Okay, Ms. Gore, you come up, give us your name and address, and we'll give you up to two minutes.
I'm Jacqueline Gore. I live at 308 Sixth Avenue in Scanlonville. A lot of people may not know the history of Scanlonville. I'm a Benya.
Come on, sister.
But what we want with the Scanlonville Park is, how many people know about Scanlon? Nobody does. Robert Scanlon was an African-American that bought six hundred and fourteen acres. Can you imagine? Six hundred and fourteen acres in 1868. That's amazing. I would like for you guys to support this park. We have worked with the town of Mount Pleasant. I am a member of the East Cooper Civic Club. I have been a member since I don't know how long. I live in the house I grew up in, and I'm sixty-nine years old. My grandfather, his father, we still own that property. We have a rich history in what they used to call Remus Point. We're going to call it Scanlonville. We're going to recognize Robert Scanlon. He needs to be recognized for accomplishing what he did back in 1868. I hope that everyone take in consideration the opportunity of Charleston County embracing this project. If you want to know a little bit about our Scanlon Park, you should see the YouTube. We had a competition of local colleges to present the presentation on how this park should be represented. This park represents all the settlement communities in Mount Pleasant, and I thank you.
Let me ask you something. How far away was that from Riverside Beach?
Hey, that's Riverside Beach.
That's what I know, that's what I thought.
Whiteside's Paradise.
Right, and all the development came and moved all that out.
Well, we have worked with the town of Mount Pleasant that we will not allow any of the remaining properties to be subdivided.
Yes.
So they have worked with us in achieving the original plaque that all the lots are half acres.
Do council members know what Riverside Beach is? Anybody know what it was?
Oh, yeah.
But if you don't, I will tell you, that's where African-Americans could go because you couldn't go to Olive Palms, you couldn't go to Solomon's Island and folly beach, so you either had to go to Riverside Beach or Mosquito Beach.
That's right.
And I was there, I was a young boy growing up, I could always remember that. We would, my dad would take us over there, and, you know, just all of a sudden.
Ion copied.
Right on the water, beautiful, too.
Ion copied Remus Point, Scanlon Valeria. We had our baseball field, we had our school.
Right.
We had our parks, so we had our beach, and we had our little nightclubs.
Yep.
We had our community, and we are still trying to maintain it being a community, so we thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, and whatever we can do, please feel free to reach out to us because that's history needs to be told.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Be told. Okay, all right, so that concludes our public comments. We're now going to go into our regularly scheduled county council meeting. I want to ask Honeycutt to lead us in prayer, and I'll do the prayers. Let us all stand.
Let it pray. Father God, we come humbly before you and ask for your wisdom that we would guide this community in the way you see fit. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jimmy. I'll be seated. This is our county council meeting where all members of council participates. I'm the chairman, Teddy Pryor. Item number one is the Freedom of Information Act, Ms. Salisbury.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Item number two is the minutes of October 26, 2021. What is the pleasure?
Second.
Moving second, and any discussion? Addition or deletions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Item number three, we have third reading ordinance. Item three A is commission of public works easements, Ms. Salisbury.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to the commissioners of public works of the city of Charleston, South Carolina, on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number 412000012 and located at 3765 Leeds Avenue, North Charleston, South Carolina. Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Schwers?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Three B is town of Rockville transfer election authority to BEVR.
An ordinance approving and accepting the complete transfer of authority to conduct municipal elections for the town of Rockville to the Board of Elections and Voter Registration of Charleston County and amending ordinance number 1541 of Charleston County to provide for the same. Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Schwers?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Three C, about the county industrial park incentives for properties located within the Tiff District.
An ordinance to further amend the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park for properties located in a redevelopment project area by and between Charleston County, South Carolina, and Colleton County, South Carolina, providing for the development of a multi-county industrial business park so as to include additional property in the Charleston County as part of the multi-county industrial park. Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Schwers?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Okay, item three E is financial incentives for CK Crosspoint Two LLC and Argent's Air Express LTD Limited.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and among CK Crosspoint Two LLC, Argent's Air Express Limited, the companies, and Charleston County whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with the companies and providing for payment by the companies of certain fees in lieu of ad florum taxes and other matters relating thereto. Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Schwers?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Okay, we move to item four, we to second reading ordinance. Item four A, repeal and replace business license ordinance.
An ordinance repealing the existing Charleston County business license ordinance as amended and replacing it with the revised model business license ordinance with the right to amend up to third reading. Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Schwers?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Okay, four B, North Charleston Sewer District easement, request social service help.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of perpetual easement to North Charleston Sewer District on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number 4690600107 and located at 3685 Rivers Avenue, North Charleston, South Carolina, with the right to amend up to third reading. Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Schwers?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Item five A, well, it's concerned agenda A through F. What is the pleasure, one at a time?
Second.
A through E, A through F.
Okay, this is moved by Mr. Sasse, second by Mr. Moody. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Item six A, the Scanlonville Park to Wingo Way.
Committee recommendation, items A through D.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Oh, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I thought six A was, this is the project that Cage came and talked against?
Yeah, the committee recommended that they go back, and then it comes back to us.
Right.
That's what the committee recommended, so you got to vote on that, telling them that.
No, sir. There were two green belt projects, and so this Scanlonville one was approved, and the next one was the Six Mile project, and that's table.
You're right, thank you for the record. Okay.
Ms. Johnson, thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. That completes our agenda. And I move the county council comments, Mr. Werman.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I would like us to consider public safety meeting, next committee meeting. We just got the results from our vaccination counts, and I'd like to hear from staff what our plans are, frankly. When we started this vaccination thing, I looked at all of our DCAs and said, what if you lose five people? What if you lose ten? Every one of them said it'll cripple us, or it'll hurt real badly. Well, EMS lost forty-three people. That's sort of one of the more important things that we do. So, Mr. Lake, I'm not going to ask you tonight because we just got these numbers, but I'd really like to hear from you guys what your, what your plan is. We've got to, we've got to tell our citizens, our wait times going from twenty minutes to sixty minutes now? I don't know, but I'd like to hear from your group on what we, what you think. Dispatch also, seven head count, gone. As our call time, somebody calls into 911, they get to wait for hold music now? I, I'd like to hear from, from what those guys do. I guess it's appropriate in public safety as anywhere else, but I'd like to hear what our plans are for that because these self-inflicted wounds, I've got to, I've got to hear from you guys what we're going to do to shore that up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Sasse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is Beverly Craven Day, if that's correct. I just think we should, should so, be sure to recognize it and thank our wonderful clerk for her many years of service and really enjoyed, we were all, all were very lucky to know her. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the record out there, Mr. Sasse, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, sir. And recognizing Miss Craven, I want to say that sometimes when we had a snack in the back, Miss Craven would bring us something homemade, and one of her favorite was okra soup, and we would enjoy that so much. And then she came up with the chili, and we'd have hot dogs. So today I brought a bread pudding because I thought that was something I could make that would be homemade and might be a compliment to what was Craven would have done. So that was my contribution. The other thing I want to make a comment on is in reference to the people that we have that haven't taken the vaccinations yet, I think in New York I noticed that they had a lot of their public safety people, policemen, and I think it was firemen. And, and one answer to the problem that they had was they use, they were using the National Guard, so I'm just thinking, just wondering if that's not something that we might have to look at, if, if that's a route that we'll need to take if we have a big shortage of our EMS and other public safety people. Thank you, sir.
All right, Reverend Middleton?
To salute all of the veterans, Thursday is Veterans Day, and certainly all who have fought for this country, those who have given their lives, and certainly those who are active, who are actively serving, we would not want to allow the week to go without, without us lifting up their service.
No, thank you.
Mr. Darby?
You guys really mixed up. Called me Mr. Schwers, okay. I'd love to be on him sometimes.
Mr. Schwers is next to Mr. Middleton, didn't I come to you?
This is my humor for this afternoon, Mr. Pryor. Please, sir, don't be so insensitive, sir. Thank you, I'll say whatever it may be.
I thought you were saying I didn't recognize you, sir.
Last week, the town of Mount Pleasant represented really sort of rubbed me the wrong way, and please pardon the vernacular, but I, I really don't understand this, this pious irony and this sanctimonious hypocrisy of the town of Mount Pleasant and Mount Pleasant Water Works. Here they want hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for green space, yet at the same time, they are refusing our community one of the basic needs, and that is sewer and water. I don't understand that irony. You come to us for hundreds of thousands of dollars, and yet you're going to deny our community a basic right. And I asked one member of the Snalden community to please give me a comment because I don't like to take credit for words of which I do not originate, and it's just a paragraph or two. And he says, "I want to point out the town's refusal to recognize or honor Charleston County ordinance 2078, which prohibits annexation as requirement for sewer service. This decision in terms of quality of life directly impacts all settlement communities in the Mount Pleasant area, and Mount Pleasant is the only town sitting in Charleston County not honoring the county's ordinance." And we were hoodwinked, Mr. Chairman, in believing that we could not sue if the community of Snalden did sue first. I mean, we really snowballed on that. He goes on to say, "Our waterways are being contaminated, yet Mount Pleasant shows no concern for this. In addition, sewer pipes are in the ground in close proximity to many Snalden residents in the county but were not allowed to get the service unless they agree to annexation. Moreover, take Snalden for example. They're, they are using Mount Pleasant Water Works to try to strong-arm us into the town. Mount Pleasant even ignored an ordinance saying this should not happen. Their waters are being contaminated, yet they showed no concern or regard for this. Currently, a proposal for paths through another settlement community is being done instead of sidewalks because the new developments in that area with no concern for the residents of Six Mile. The fears of gentrification is being realized by these communities, and you want their tax dollars to help it." But then he asks a very profound question. What about Shem Creek, which is opposite in terms of culture of Snalden? They have pipes there, but they want to join the town, so why are you going to make Snalden join the town? That is the, that is the epitome of bigotry to the core. A white community have pipes, a black community because now you can't get water. That is not right. It's simply not right. And Mount Pleasant needs to come home and treating all of its citizens the right way because I still maintain, as I got from Miss Craven one time, what is best for the best should be best for the rest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Honeycutt?
I just wanted to mention, I don't know if everyone saw the article over the weekend that Steve Bailey did on our digital corridor, but I had the opportunity to visit the Charleston Tech Center, and really incredible stuff. They, one of the reasons I visited because they are a neighbor of 995 Morrison, they're at 997, and they are really bringing innovation to our area in a way that we would have loved to seen ten years ago, but it's very, it's very futuristic, and so I'm excited to see all of those startups. Mr. Dykes, I'd love to get with you and talk about how we can be a partner in all that they're doing because there are some really incredible companies, and they bring in 997, and they are really bringing innovation to our area in a way that we would have loved to see 10 years ago, but it's very futuristic. And so I'm excited to see all of those startups. Mr. Dykes, I'd love to get with you and talk about how we can be a partner in all that they're doing, because there are some really incredible companies, and they bring in incredible talent that really have great salaries as well, so love to be a part of that.
Okay, thank you. Adam Asperman?
Yes, sir.
Administrator? Okay, before we close out, Mr. Darby, you beat me to the punch.
Sorry, sir.
I was going to ask Ms. Hamm, I had asked her before to start, you know, putting the paperwork together to actually sue these people, the Mount Pleasant Water Works, for not abiding by our ordinance. And so I take the same point Mr. Darby said, we should not ask them to come up with $20,000 for something that they're breaking our ordinance. So if there's no objection, I would like for you to go ahead and get the ball rolling. If you got to go and get an outside person to do it, we need to do it and show these people that we care, because this thing has been going on down for the last three or four years, and we need to bring some kind of resolution. And so instead of us being a part of their lawsuit, we need to make them a part of ours. So is that something you and your staff can do? You don't have to answer right now, you can get back, but that's something we want done ASAP.
Yes, sir, so I would like to respond really quickly and just let council know that Mount Pleasant Water Works actually has a new general manager as of August 2021. And so I'd like to engage with that particular person first, just in the sense that there may be a different tone about this particular project prior to filing a lawsuit, and I will respond back to council on both of those.
Well, good luck, because if they got the same lawyer they had before, they ain't going to change. Okay, I can tell you that right now. They got the same lawyer, it's not going to change, but it's personal, and it ain't got nothing to do with business, it was personal. Okay, so you know, just don't hold us out or string us out too long if you can, let's get something done, let's let them know we serious about what we doing. The next thing I would ask you to do is get with Walt and his team and code enforcement and come up with an ordinance that these people who are not cleaning their property up in the island-operated area, you know, Charleston County, would get a letter, giving them 30 days to clean their property up, but if it's not cleaned up in 30 days, we will do it and put a lien on the property until, you know, until the property is sold. Because a lot of these people are skirting by, you got the city over here, North Charleston over here, and these people are not cleaning up their property. I got a letter from a lady on Saturday, and I went by there to look at that today, and it was, it's awful. And nobody should be made to live by something like that. I saw a cat look like a possum, that's how big the cat was, and I'm telling you, you know, you got rodents and all that living right next door, and they doing some remodeling on their home, and they shouldn't be told, well, you know, it's nothing we can do, because it is something we can do. So if these people are not going to clean it up, we'll clean it up and then put a lien on their property, and they can't sell it until we get our funds. So if you will look at that for me and work with that, get somebody in your staff to work with Walt and his staff and the administrator, you know, do they have something, and then when y'all get that ready, Mr. Darby, I'd ask you to call a rule and policies meeting, and then we can look at it and then debate that and then move it forward. Because I know I wouldn't want to live next to something when I saw today like that. But I already told them what I would do, but I'm not going to say it publicly, because I don't want to give anybody any ideas, but I'm telling you, it was just awful. Okay, and we do honor Ms. Craven today, God bless her, and you know, I know she's looking down on us smiling, you know, and Christian, I know she's smiling and, you know, giving you, you know, good, she trained you well, and you stuck by Ms. Craven even through the rough times. I got to give you yours, and you stuck by Ms. Craven, you never tried to push her out, and that's why I say, you know, good thing comes to those who wait.
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad you waited because you're such an asset to us. And so, you know, Ms. Craven, we honor you, I know you're looking down on us, and you know, she taught all of us well. It was no special, she treated us as, we all were nine of hers.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, please forgive, because I'm saying this with all honesty, veracity and objectivity, because I don't know it all, and I try to look at it from all ends, but could a member of council perhaps after we leave sometime, would just sit down with me and explain to me as you see, why would a town like Mount Pleasant events a type of unfairness? At least I see it as that. And if I'm wrong about that, I would like for some of these to explain, help me to understand, because I want to be objective, I don't know what the rationale is, because I just don't understand it. So if there's a member of council who could help me out with that, I'd be very appreciative.
I join you in the perception of injustice in this particular matter on the part of Mount Pleasant, and I think it's a travesty, and if we don't stand up for that community, shame on us.
Yes, don't doubt it. Mr. Darby?
Yes, sir.
And if you got time, I'll be glad to sit down and tell you what I know. It is a long story, but it's more than just, you know, I want to get politics explained into this too, and I'll share with you privately, you know, what I know.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and if anybody else wants to meet with you, they can do that, but it's not fair. And you know, like I said, they ran these pipes, so these people, y'all, they even gave up their right of way and their easement, and they were promised that they would be able to tap into it, even use federal funds, and you know, and they did it on one half of the street and then do it on the other, and that's just implorable, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. And for somebody to be forced, for those who don't like mandates, but that is a mandate they're doing.
That's exactly right.
And so, you know, if we're going to fight, for one, we got to fight for all.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
I need to see you, you know.